Mark just pulled in.
Okay, well he'd be just second late. Please be led by Mr. Jernigan, Doris Jernigan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we have our moment of silence, try to think about all the things we could do as a board to do a better job than what we do. Thank you. Prove the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, but let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, anybody have any questions? None, I'll entertain the motion.
Somebody.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Some carries, let's see, we go down here to... Zone exemption appeal.
Yes, sir, we have two board appeals tonight. They're both here, they're both here now, so we'll start on those. The first appeal tonight, actually to start off, Ms. McCloud needs to swear in if anyone is going to speak tonight. Our first tonight is Gato's, you guys are welcome to come on up. I'll just give a brief summary. Gatos requests a zone exemption for their child to attend Stewart'sboro Elementary School instead of Blackman Elementary School. Stewart'sboro Elementary School is an overcrowded school, which is why it's going to die at this point.
My mom, Bill Trammell, she's the caregiver of my son. She has a babysitter, and she keeps him and my niece who already attends Stewart'sboro, she keeps them at their house. So it'd be a hardship on me to, for him to go to Blackman because due to my work hours, I can't, I can't take him to school or pick him up, and I don't have anybody else to get him like on a school bus or anything.
She has, my wife has kept him and my granddaughter since they were both born, and she keeps them at my grandson's house. And he's also got a three-year-old daughter that she stays with during the day. So she takes right now, since he's not in school, she takes my sister to school and then brings them back to his house to stay the day and then go pick up my sister at school.
Okay, so he's going into kindergarten, but he has not been in preschool or anything?
No.
Okay, okay.
He'll be starting kindergarten.
Does anyone have any questions for them? Ms. Jernigan?
I have some questions about residences. You, your home is not...
No, she, they don't live with us.
Right, but, and you're leaving early in the morning. Who keeps the child from the time you leave work? Do you take the child, do your mother?
Yes, I take him to my mother's.
And you would do this now? I mean, when you, if this appeal is granted?
Yes, that's what we're trying to get, why we're trying to get it set that way, so we have him with her.
That means a very early getup for him.
Excuse me?
See, I'm already keeping him every day anyway.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I just said, it means an early getup every morning for him to leave your home and get to your home.
Yeah, and then I go to my sister's.
Mr. Gill, I know why this was turned down, because of the situation where, you know, the school is overcrowded, but do you have, do you actually have a recommendation on this?
Obviously Stewart'sboro is a crowded school, and I think you guys know that, but at the same time, Blackman's relatively crowded too. I don't have an issue if the board doesn't letting your grandchild and your child go to Stewart'sboro, provided there's room in kindergarten classes. It might be two, three, four weeks out before we know. Typically, we don't grant zone exemptions in Stewart'sboro simply because they are overcrowded. But when we do grant zone exemptions, there's generally cause, one, there's enough room, of course, there is enough room. So if the board doesn't object, I certainly could live with granting that, provided you can wait two or three weeks till we get to kindergarten numbers at Stewart'sboro and there's adequate space.
Do we have any suggestions from the board?
There seems to be a good resolution to it. We're not in a position to keep adding classrooms, because there are limits as to how many children you can have in a class. Once you get one over, then you're exposing the system to adding another classroom. So that gets to be an expensive proposition for all of us.
Do I have a motion that would provide this, providing that there is room in the kindergarten classroom?
Get Mr. Gill to restate.
Yes, I move that we grant the zone exemption, provided there's adequate space in the kindergarten classes at Stewart'sboro. But again, that'll be probably two to four weeks out before we know.
I make that motion.
Second? Any more discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Both.
Who said it?
Mark did, Dr. Bernstein. And Mr. Gill, Mr. Evans will contact you as soon as he finds out the information, but...
Probably about mid-July.
Hopefully, hopefully you'll get the zone exemption.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
You know, this is, this is really kind of outstanding. We have two, and I've seen nights we sit here and have forty or fifty zone exemptions. So this is, you know, the board generally turns these down, and that's the reason there's two. So thank you for your concern, and we try to be concerned also.
The second board, feel nice for Ms. Cochrane. She's requesting a zone exemption for her child to attend Siegel Middle School instead of Oakland Middle School. Everyone's worried that Siegel Middle School is an overcrowded school. Ms. Cochrane was one of the families that was involved in rezoning, but she does not live in Brentmead. She lives off of Jefferson Pike on Antique Lane.
I'm here to request that my daughter be, let her stay in Siegel Middle School. I do have a daughter that is at Siegel High School. As far as transportation, I carry both of my daughters to school. They are athletes and in the band, therefore their equipment cannot be carried onto the bus, or at least our driver in our neighborhood wouldn't allow them to do that. And it's easier for me to go to one area instead of having to go across town and back over to the high school. My job is in Laverne. I work for a fundraising company, fundraising in schools. And I have, during the fall season, I have to be there fairly early, so I drop Jordy off, which is the middle school student, at seven fifteen in the morning, and then take the older one on over to the high school. Just requesting that you keep her in Siegel Middle School, so I can keep my daughters together. Basically, that's it.
Any questions for the board? Ms. Todd?
I guess, not, only question I ever, what about your, the one at Siegel High School going to Oakland High School?
Right now, I'm zoned for Siegel.
I understand that.
She will be a junior next year.
But there's open space at Oakland?
I'd rather stay at Siegel. My oldest daughter, to give you a background, she has ADHD. We started that progress in sixth grade at Siegel Middle School, and her elementary school's never mentioned that she had any kind of problems, and Siegel Middle stood behind me, had her tested, had the psychologist come in and watch her, and she went from a C-average student to a straight-A student, and I commend Siegel Middle School and Siegel High School, and I do not want to move her.
I have concern about granting this, in that I know of another parent in Brentmead who is in the same situation, who's been corresponding with me, and I'm saying to them, yes, your child can go to Siegel High School, but we'll go to Oakland Middle School. And that's the situation you're in.
Well, I just have one more year at Siegel Middle, and I just want to, just one more year.
And I'm meeting with, is in the same situation.
There's several that are in that situation.
Well, her father lives in the Siegel Middle School zone. He lives on eleven oh-three Victoria Lane, or he'll be moving there this month. And of course, I have custody, but we have a very good relationship to where the girls do go to his house and stay during the week. But with his work schedule, I go and pick them up at his home and take them to school.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes, sir.
This is a little bit different situation. As I understand it, that she actually could allow the child to go there, live with the father, and go there. So we don't want to make people have to do these type things, of course, it's just for one year. And if it's, if it's, if the child's going to be allowed to do that, by that means, then why don't we just go ahead and let this one under special circumstances for the one year? If she's going to be allowed to go with her parent or her father, and that's parent the way she's headed, and I don't know, it's kind of...
We have families who have done that. It does require a court order changing custody to go, so that the father would be the primary guardian.
Yeah, I know some hoops done there.
Right, we've already checked into that. We spoke with somebody at the legal department here and also at the courthouse.
So, that's what I'm saying is, so, of course, obviously, you can go that route, but since that's an option for her and she's going to take it, why not give her a little accommodation in that? I mean, I just, I feel like, I mean, she's got the right to do it.
When Siegel was first, when the zone was first set up for Siegel, we experienced this with a lot of people who were living outside the Siegel zone, who took, I'm going to call them fictitious addresses, they were real addresses, but they didn't live there. They lived outside the zone and just used this alternate address as a way to gain access to the Siegel complex. That was not a good thing. It was very, a very bad thing. Ultimately, led to some, in my opinion, to some of the overcrowding situation that exists at the two schools today. My motion is that we deny this request.
I thought I had the floor on, I maybe didn't put in informal.
I was going to ask the director if he had a comment, because I asked on the last one if he had a comment, so...
Actually, first of all, I've known Teresa a long time. She was a basketball manager, and I believe we won the state your senior year, right?
No, it was my freshman year, and we win our sophomore year.
She actually was doing most of the coaching, but...
It's not a surprise.
All that said, I think highly of her, which made this really difficult for me, but I mean, we have to, at the end of the day, try to, you know, implement fairness. And what did concern me, and I told Teresa earlier, was that there are so many others that are in the same boat, and we were afraid that that would, that would open the old barn door. Now, she has noted that her dad lives in the zone, and it might be sage on our part if Angel went back on what James did and tell her what had, what would have to be done legally for your child to go, to remain at Siegel Middle. Like, I'm like, Mr. Doris, you know, I don't, I don't think you want to do anything that's not above board, and we certainly don't want to, don't want to do it, and Mr. Delbury would not tolerate it if he do a bad. So that said, Angel, what, I mean, what's, what's the protocol on that?
The father would have to be the primary residential guardian in order for that to be her zone.
Yeah, I believe he spoke with you on that issue. Said that we've already consulted a lawyer, and said we could get a court order to say that he has fifty-fifty joint custody.
So there's not a, there used to be another term that was used, Angel, that was, would come short of her awarding custody to her hus, ex-husband.
But we used to accept...
Power of attorney. Power of attorney.
We don't accept those in limited circumstances now, and I don't know that you can go that way.
Probably wouldn't qualify.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is, it appears that she's headed in that direction, and if she does it right, obviously, be, to be legal, then we're going to have it. But if you're afraid if we let it go through the normal process, then it might be other people to try to use that, well, you've let her, let her do it, even though the reason is that she ultimately can get it done. So I withdraw my motion on this, and if she's going, she's going to go ahead and go the other route, then she's already started that route. So I withdraw my motion to allow the normal process.
I didn't, I didn't mean to step in front of Grant, but...
That's fine.
The chair recognized me, and I thought he had relinquished his position.
I didn't know that he had made a motion. I thought he had just, was discussing, so I was, I was the one that was incorrect on that particular issue. I would say to let her pursue that, and then pending what, what happens there, y'all can make that decision, can't you?
If the family gets changed and it's required, and he actually, it's legally, he's the guardian, and he lives in that zone, and so she has a right to attend there.
Did you understand, did you understand?
Ms. Jernigan?
Unfortunately, didn't understand that.
Yes, the cost, there's more cost involved that way.
I understand.
I see if she goes that route, it wouldn't even be any issues.
No, right.
No one would have to...
Any family in that situation has an option if they pursue that.
But I would say, Teresa, and I want you to understand, part of our dilemma is, you know, once we make an exception in any, any number of zones, it makes the next time we turn somebody down impossible to defend. And, you know, there's people be, you know, we let one or two, and more people be salivating, and they'd want the same, you know, the same rights that they do, so...
Well, those other people, did they not file the zoning exemptions too, as I did, and file the appeals? And they're not here.
Some had, and some of them are going to come next month. We've already heard from them.
We have turned them, to tell you the truth, we've turned them all down, haven't we? I don't think there's any that we haven't turned down.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we need to take action, official action on this, or we just pull off and pursue it to, for legal action?
I don't know that it's necessary to take action if she pursues that direction, which I know that...
I think that we need to take action on the zone exemptions that she's asked for. That doesn't close any door for her, taking the other option one way or the other.
So then we have to turn it down? Or you can turn it down or approve it pending her situation, but probably it's better to turn it down and then let her come back with that information.
Unless Ms. Cochrane wants to withdraw it, she's the one that's asked for the hearing, so...
I move to deny the appeal.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Both. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a status report on the various projects that are taking place in the county, and Mr. Clardy will handle it.
The first project we have is Whitworth Buchanan. And in the construction business, this school at this point is known as a squeaker, which means we're barely squeaking by out there. We're going to make it, but it is touch and go. Oakland is a couple of weeks ahead, but we're making good progress. They have more people on the job now, more manpower, and they're installing finishes. The site sewer lacks about two or three hundred feet, having it installed. I met with the city the other day on both projects, and everyone's confident that that will be completed and approved on time. So, Mr. Jernigan, I went out and visited the school last week, I believe it was. So I think he felt a little bit better about the school once we walked it. I have some pictures here. A lot of these photos were taken last week, early in the week, so now we have a lot of paving down. Site grading and things come along much better. They have topsoil down. Picture of the front of the school. That's paved now. The auditorium, the seating are, the seating is going in at this time. Kitchen equipment is being set down. Also, the ceiling grid is in this area in the cafeteria. The office now is completely painted, base is down, so that'll be ready at the end of the month for, or the first of the month, for the principal and her staff to move in and start preparing the rest of the school. This hallway now has tile down in it, and a final painting going on out there. The media center has carpet in it now, and it's all cleaned up. Oakland Middle School, as I said, is a little bit ahead. The front of the building, you can see the trees are in out there, grading's a little bit more finalized, and also there's paving down and striping in these areas now. Back shot at the cafeteria dock. Just a side shot, front shot. Gym floor is being finished at this time, sanding it, put the finish down. This was during installation. The auditorium is cleaned up now, it's looking really well. Here's one of the science labs where the final cleaning has been done. Front office. And then we move on to Central Magnet School. If anyone has a question, I'd be glad to stop and answer those. Central Magnet School had a massive amount of demolition that had to be done. All the demolition is done now, with the exception of some asbestos that will be completed and abated this week. See, one of the floors is cut for the science lab. That has plumbing in the hole now, the demolition in one of the rooms, all the way up to the ceiling. MacFadden School of Excellence is moving along. All the exterior work is pretty much complete, all the floor tiles removed, and it's started reinstalling floor tile and painting now. I don't know if many of you recall what the building looked like before, but you can see the darker paint and the re-grading in front. We had a serious water problem getting into that basement, so we put in some drains and some concrete, and we re-graded all of that. And all the last American paint is on the exterior of the building, back. One of the French drains in progress, over on the new wing. It's the front of the building now, with all the new concrete work done.
How old is that new wing?
I don't know exactly.
It's several, several years old, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, it must be...
Nineteen eighty, I thought it was.
We need to find a new name for the wing, then help.
How about the old? The new old.
Old is irrelevant.
The nineteen eighty wing.
One of the interior floors, it's been flooring removed, and also the unremnant cement board that's gone back down for the tops. Other than one of them. Then the Oakland Greenhouse is complete. Here's the final picture. This is a CDC greenhouse that's accessible by wheelchair, funded through Ms. Bell's funds that she received. Then the Laverne High School Ed PACs, the Riverdale High School Ed PAC, and the Oakland High School Ed PAC, are the through-the-wall air conditioners and heaters. We're replacing those in all the old wings of the building, and we expect those parts in by the end of July, and maintenance will install those before school starts. Roof replacement in the bandroom at Riverdale will be complete at the end of next week. And then campus school, Mr. Gill had requested I give an update. Of all the priority one, priority two, priority three, and priority four, the first column are the items that have been completed. The second column are the items that are in progress. Window replacement, new carpet, VCT in the classroom are in progress right now. The new windows, we have bid on that. We're waiting for some clarification from, to the suppliers, to make sure that the specs were met on both bids. And then the remaining items are to replace the plumbing, repair the front steps and columns, lower the chimneys, the kindergarten toilet partitions, point out the exterior of the building, tie in the rear drain into the storm system, and new acoustical ceilings, and exterior painting. Have a budget for that based on our recent prices. I think the last time I showed this to you, we were up at just over a million dollars, but we have the window replacement and the flooring in this new budget. We, MTSU puts in a certain amount of money every year for extraordinary maintenance needs, and we're taking that money and applying it to the agreement that we have with them to attack some of these things, such as the floor covering that we're installing now. All of the items, priority one, two, three, and four, have to be completed by August 2012 for the agreement. Any questions on that?
Anybody got a question? I got a comment. Mr. Clardy, this just alone is a monumental task, what's been done this year with the two new middle schools and the campus and the Central Magnet and MacFadden. And I'd venture to say that Rutherford County doesn't have a new school or an old school that's second to anybody in the state of Tennessee. I think it's, it's, it's just perfect, and that's, that's due to your leadership, and you're carrying it out, and the board requesting these things, or you requesting them to be done. And I think that's an important issue, and thank you for a job well done, from me. Anyone else have a comment? Okay, thank you, Mr. Clardy.
We were asked to bring forth the portable, the other night, situation, and this is very hard to read, but I gave you a copy of it so you can see it. We are relocating twelve portable classrooms this year. Those are coming from Hittrell, Buchanan, and... I didn't bring my paper, I believe it's written on the last page.
Anything coming out of last cases?
And last case, yes, correct, correct. We have a total of a hundred and forty-four portable classrooms, and we had thirty requests... Um, and we had thirty requests this year, uh, but Mr. Gill and Mr. Odom worked with the principal and got those down to eleven classrooms. And, uh, helped them address their needs, uh, in other ways. The... The current status of the ones that are being moved, uh, the double from Buchanan to Laverne High. Uh, as you can see in that chart on the last page, we're currently working on the electrical on that. Week of twenty-first, we'll be installing fire alarms and getting those ready for final inspection. Two singles from Buchanan to Smyrna Middle have been moved. Uh, we're working on electrical and also the fire alarm will be completed week of twenty-first. A double from Buchanan, John Coleman, uh, is relocated. Uh, the deck's thrown and, uh, they're the same as the other two. Schools, uh, singles from Kittrelle two have been moved and we're working on the deck, also the electrical, in the week of twenty-first on the, uh, fire alarm. The other ones are in the process of, uh, being loaded now. And we don't know the exact dates on those, but we are in better shape this year than we have been at other times. And that's, uh, basically it. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to, gotta answer for you.
So, does this mean this coming year will have a hundred and fifty-six classrooms in portables? Am I reading that right?
Um, let me see here. Uh, we'll have a, no, we'll have a total still of a hundred and forty-four. We'll just relocate an eleven.
Okay, I didn't, I couldn't tell if those...
Yeah.
It says twelve.
Well, actually twelve classrooms.
So, those aren't in addition to it? They're just within that hundred and forty?
And in other words, opening two new middle schools has gotten rid of the portables at Buchanan, Kittrelle, and Last Cassis. So, we're relocating those other schools that are overcrowded. And, uh, I'd just like to make one comment. Uh, Rick, Rick, this is, um, you know, Mr. Gill has helped us. I appreciate, uh, him as my direct supervisor because he lays out what he wants to be done and then he leaves us alone. If the results is not what he wants, he gets re-involved in it and redirects us. Uh, if we're giving him the results that he wants, he lets us do our job. He doesn't intervene any way. And it's very rare, uh, in the forty-five years that I've worked, um, that you'll run across a leader like that that will actually let you do your job. So, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate the board and the support that we've received in my department, uh, on the financing and also very rarely has the board intervened on anything that, uh, we've done once the financing is placed. You just don't know what that means to, to be able to actually go out and not worry about someone looking over your shoulder all the time and trying to second-guess you. It just means a lot to us.
Thanks, Mr. Clardy. Let me ask, ask you a question, Gary. I had a, uh, had a lady call me the other day about a portable we'd moved into Smyrna Middle. And, you know, she indicated it was a real eyesore and, you know, couldn't we do better? And of course, I explained to her there were financial restraints and that, you know, we often have to move portables around. But do we, uh, occasionally, if there is a portable that's, that's looking rather ratty? Do we paint the exterior? Do we supply it? I mean, haven't we done some of that?
We do, uh, over the last three years particularly, we go in and if we move a portable in, uh, and it doesn't match the surrounding portable, we put a new coat of paint on the outside. We patch anything that needs patching. Uh, we will go in, uh, sometimes replace the floor covering. We replace, uh, wall, paint, everything. And then, uh, make sure that they get a, a decent group of furniture in there that's usable.
You know, I actually went by, uh, Saturday, Sunday. It's, the portable wasn't too far from where my mother lived. Looked at it. I didn't personally think it looked that bad. I've seen some in the system that were considerably worse. More often not, they're stuck out behind the building where they're not noticed from the highway. But, uh, I, I knew you'd done something. I told her that I would connect with you on that, so let's, let's tomorrow, Monday, let's talk about it and maybe you're gonna take the peek at it.
I had a lady call me about a portable and she said it looked really bad. And she said, if, if you or the director of schools had one behind your house, uh, you, and you had to look at it every day, you would, you would know what I'm talking about. And I told her where the director of schools live and if she could go up there and look behind his house, she'd see one. So, she was saying, you know. Doris, do you have a question?
No, I don't have a question. Just, uh, in, in looking at this. It, it, uh, as I, as I view it, Riverdale's our leading problem as far as portables. But followed closely behind by Smyrna Middle, Sturridge Borough, and Eagle. Given the size of these schools, so those seem to be the four schools that need to be watched in the immediate future as to what the, uh, what their needs are going to be.
Yeah, and then...
And I've just, I went by Buchanan about, about two and a half hours ago and it's strange to see no trailers on that campus, 'cause I've seen them for the eight years that I've been here. And now there are no, no portables on the campus. And it's a good thing.
Sure.
We've got like, for example, Laverne High and Smyrna High where we can't put anymore, 'cause there's, there're kind of not any room. And there are two or three other schools, I think, that are... Riverdale doesn't really have mo- uh, room for additional portables, uh, and maybe one or two other places. So, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to deal with growth.
And it's very difficult to get the portables in proximity so you can actually supervise students the way you need to. I mean, you might find some place to stick one, but it's not practical as far as, uh, in that aspect. And one thing I wanted to say about relocating portables. If we can pull it on the road without it falling apart, we try to fix it up and use them.
Yep.
Grant, did you have a question?
Well, I was gonna make the comment that, uh, Segal Middle and Segal High had, uh, eight and seven respectively. And, uh, it, I, it's hard to see that many at one time when you go by, but they've got them kind of spaced around, but, uh...
Anyone else have a comment on this issue? Okay, let's go to the next. Did you have one, Don? I never know when you got one or not. I have to read your mind.
Well, I, I was thinking about portables and this, and the condition that they get in. I can recall very well, uh, portables at Thurman Francis Junior High School and Smyrna Middle both, that where the floors would be so bad that we would have to, uh, move a teacher's desk in certain areas so that students wouldn't be in danger of falling through, but, uh...
That's the two behind Mr. Gill's house now.
If the teacher fell through, they'd have workmen's comp.
I understand that.
I can, I can, I'm sorry, Don. I, I will never forget, we had several out behind Cedar Grove at one time and, and they weren't in the best of condition. And I had a teacher that never officially complained to me about, I guess there might have been some insulation issues or something. She actually wrote George W. Bush to complain about the condition of that portable. Well, we got a letter, uh, from the Office of the President of the United States about that portable and asking if we would look into, into the lady's complaint. Of course, no, Mr. Watson wasn't real happy. And I wasn't real happy, but we did, you know, fix the insulation and went from there.
Were you finished, Don? Were you finished?
Well, uh, on a lighter note, uh, I, I would think, uh, Mr. Gill, have you already extended his contract?
Mr. Clardy, would you like me to, uh, run dig on that? Yeah, he's got another, he's got a...
I can remember, one thing I told you, hire good people that stay out of their way. It looked like you followed that advice.
Well, you know, I learned that lesson when I was coaching. I had a whole lot better teams when I had some really, really good players than I had average players. That was a good lesson way back then.
I just wanted to add on the portable that, you know, we have a lot better reporting system now and we have a lot better response time to our maintenance tickets. So, you know, when people understand that they're going to get action when they turn something in, they're more likely to report it. Uh, you know, I've heard nightmares of years past when teachers would turn something in a couple of times and it wouldn't get fixed. So, they just dropped it and lived with the problem. But now, uh, we get a lot of, I mean, if we have a little bit of mold in the corner of a portable, we get called, we go abate it, clean it up, test it, make sure it's right. If you have a hole in the floor where there's a groundhog climbing up in it and building a nest in the corner, we get that reported.
They think you're joking, but that happens.
And, uh, all of those things. So, so we've addressed a lot of that.
Thank you, Mr. Clardy.
Good job, Mr. Clardy.
Anyone else? All right. Update on nurses, the next one, isn't it?
Yeah, some, I think Mr. Doris, during the, gonna ask for an update on nurses and we've put in front of you a, uh, sheet that reflects number of nurses in the county and et cetera. Ms. Barnes is prepared to answer any questions or you want to give a quick summary, Ms. Barnes?
Mr. Gill asked us to put together a, a report summarizing our school nurse program. We currently have thirty-eight registered nurses with Rutherford County schools. Of that thirty-eight, one is the Director of Health Services, Liz Graves, who stays at the central office and works with all of her nurses. Two are what we call charge nurses, and those charge nurses oversee, troubleshoot, they mentor those school nurses, their school-based nurses. And they also attend all of the IEP meetings and five oh four meetings as our representatives of the nursing staff. They're also used to cover in the absence of a school nurse if needed. Then the fourth nurse is a floater, and that floater is used to cover for absences throughout the system on a regular basis. That floater is also used if we have a student that's identified in a school that requires a full-time nurse. She may have to be reassigned temporarily until Liz can redo the whole schedule to address the needs at that school. So, from thirty-eight, that takes us down to thirty-four school-based nurses. And of those thirty-four, twenty-seven are assigned full-time to schools because we have twenty-seven schools who have students with medical procedures that require full-time nursing staff. And I've listed those schools at the bottom and the particular, uh, medical procedure that has that requirement. So, when you take those twenty-seven schools, that leaves us seven nurses currently that serve the remaining eighteen schools. And so, they're assigned part-time to those schools to come in and do routine procedures. Um, we do have three additional nursing positions in this year's budget and pending Monday night's decision, we hope to be able, hopefully be able to post and bring those t- uh, nurses on as quickly as possible, which will put us to ten nurses covering the remaining eighteen schools. So, everybody will have at least a part-time, which they do now. But sometimes they have to do two schools or maybe three schools depending on the situation. I added a little note about Dystat because that is the drug that's being prescribed for seizures. And when a student is prescribed Dystat, we do require a full-time nurse to be there. And so, anytime doctors' orders come in, and with forty thousand students, we have that quite frequently, we sometimes have to shift our nursing staff to make sure, excuse me, we have a full-time nurse at that school to serve that student. That make sense to your questions?
Well, I, my question is, in today's environment, could we do without nurses?
No, sir.
A lot of this is federally mandated, I say.
These are, there are medical procedures that we're obligated to provide to the students. And we must have an, a healthcare professional there that's licensed to provide that service.
Claire?
Are there any funds from the federal government that helps us out with this or is this an unfunded mandate?
No, sir.
Any other questions? Financial matters. Thank you, Paul.
A, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven general purpose budget with debt service account changes. Two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, general purpose school budget reflects the changes that have been made to the account numbers used to record the interest and principal payments for the Energy Efficient Schools Initiative notes payable. This change only affects the account numbers, not the amount of the payment. And we recommend that you approve changing the account numbers used to record the interest and principal payments for the Energy Efficient Schools Initiative notes payable as presented.
Motion. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Next.
General Purpose Budget Amendments. One, revenues and transfer to federal funds. This amendment addresses cleaning up the budgeted two thousand nine, two thousand and ten revenues. Increases the general purpose school fund balance by five hundred thousand dollars and decreases transfers to other funds by the same five hundred thousand dollars. We have been able to handle the timing issues in funding our federal projects with five hundred thousand instead of the one million that was originally amended. In the revenue amendments, the revenue increases offset revenue decreases except for an additional two hundred, uh, twenty thousand, five hundred dollars in recent donations. Twenty thousand, five hundred dollars expenditures related to the donation are the only expenditure increases. Recommend that you increase the general purpose school fund balance by five hundred thousand dollars and decrease transfers to other funds by the same five hundred thousand and amend an additional twenty thousand, five hundred dollars in recent donations and related expenditures and to amend the other revenue accounts as presented.
Heard the recommendation.
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Passes, substitute.
This amendment cleans up the budgeted two thousand nine, two thousand and ten expenditures for substitute teachers by moving a total of three hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars in already budgeted funds for substitutes. No new funds are involved. Existing budgeted funds are being moved between the two object codes for substitute teachers, three sixty-nine for certified and three seventy for non-certified, and to the major functions where the expenditures have been incurred. Recommend that you amend a total of three hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars in already budgeted funds for substitute teachers as presented.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
Motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes.
Three, other expenditures. This amendment reallocates already budgeted non-labor expenditures throughout the two thousand nine, two thousand and ten general purpose school budget. Total of seven hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars in expenditures is affected and an additional forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars in state reimbursement revenue for testing expenditures offsets part of the ninety thousand, five hundred dollars in the evaluation and testing line item, seventy-one, three-two-oh-dash-three-two-two. The other major changes covered in this amendment are a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars for additional unemployment compensation, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the portable moves and higher mowing cost, a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the custodial materials and supplies. Most of the other amendments reallocate non-labor line items within major functions. Recommend that you amend an additional forty-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars in state reimbursement revenue for testing expenditures and to reallocate seven hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars in other expenditures as presented.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
Motion.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Who carries?
Test, four, testing. This amendment increases testing and evaluation expenditures by forty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and uses already budgeted communication expenditures as the funding source. The communication funds are available because of changes to the state contract and the way E-rate is being handled. The end-of-course tests are now a component of the BEP and are partially funded by the state. Recommend that we approve amending forty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars to seventy-two, one-three-oh-dash-three-twenty-two. Testing and evaluation expenditures and to amend... testing and evaluation expenditures and to amend forty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars in budgeted communication expenditures as presented.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed?
Certified staff adjustments. This amendment is a late adjustment of twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars in certified staff line items in the budget. Eight hundred and sixty-two dollars in related benefits is also being moved. The amendment is due to s- late staff changes and two minor budget amendments. Recommend that you approve amending twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars in certified staff line items and eight hundred and sixty-two dollars in related benefits as presented.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Centralized.
Centralized Cafeteria Fund one forty-three budget amendment. This amendment adjusts the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten centralized cafeteria budget fund one forty-three. Revenues are being reduced by four hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and operating expenditures are being decreased by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This is a very conservative amendment since the May year-end adjustments and summer feeding program are still being reviewed. Recommend that you amend two thousand, uh, the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten central, centralized cafeteria budget fund one forty-three as presented.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? You feel comfortable that there's not going to be any, uh, override on this?
We're okay, are we?
More discussion?
Um. What impact does the, uh, summer feeding program have on the?
And Jeff, I mean, it's, it was, we've reimbursed federal money on all expenditures. I don't think there's any impact at all, is it, Jeff?
No, it's, it will just come down to additional revenue and some additional expenditures.
Okay, but, but it is a zero program.
Right, right.
Define what is the summer feeding program? I don't, I don't quite understand.
Well, it's places throughout the county designated sites. Kids, uh, folks that are under eighteen or younger can eat for free. Uh, regardless of your poverty level or anything else. Uh, and I guess it's something this government began at one time. I know we have it, how many places we got it, Jeff?
I don't know how many about this year. I, I can.
That's all right. Quite a few. But at any rate, uh, anytime from such and such time, such and such time, you can kind of meander in there and eat, eat breakfast for free if you're under that age. And I think if you're older, you can go in and also for a reasonable price purchase your breakfast. So, uh, I think it's, uh, well-used or will take, uh.
The cafeteria has become a twelve-month operation.
Yes, sir.
As opposed to nine or ten-month operation.
Right.
Any more discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed? Facilities, A.
A Oakland High School eat. Eagle Scout gazebo project. Principal Bill Spurlock of Oakland High School has submitted a request to construct a gazebo at the school on behalf of scout Griffin Ford to assist with Griffin's Eagle Scout certification. Griffin will construct the gazebo in the grassy area between the CDC classroom and the new CDC greenhouse. The floor shape of the gazebo will be a six-sided polygon approximately nine feet, six inches from point to point and construct it pressure-treated lumber at no cost to the Rutherford County Board. Griffin will comply with all state and local codes and the Rutherford County Schools Engineering Department will inspect the project regularly for compliance of the specifications. And obviously, it appears to me that Griffin must be here. I appreciate you doing that and it's certainly an honor. Impressed every time I see an Eagle Scout, you know, come in here and do a project for us. Just the fact that they made Eagle Scout is a remarkable accomplishment. So that said, for our read recommendation, if you want to step up here, say something in conjunction, uh, connection with that or anything else?
Well, I just, I'm not either, but I make it through these meetings. Yes, sir. You might show what you're doing, tell them what you're doing. If you want to tell us something about how you reached this level, that'd be interesting, too.
Thank you. I need one of those behind my house. Yeah, that wouldn't give you a badge, though, would it?
This even, okay, just checking. All right. Gazebo, as you said, is going to be a hexagon. It's going to be a base of four, four by four, no, six four by four posts. Uh, actually, the design that I found, I have the website on the parts sheet paper. And there's, the design here will actually be changed. The roof will be made out of tin to last longer and it gives a better effect in the rain. And this little step foot thing to step into it will be nonexistent. Because there's a six-foot, yeah, six-foot wide walkway ramp leading up to Mr. Coffey's classroom. We will build straight onto that. Uh, all the parts and the woodwork there in the, hold on, let me find it. All right. Uh, as the paper says and as Mr. Spurlock has told you, it will measure nine feet, six and a half inches across. Uh, that's about all that I really need to say, yeah.
You want to have any questions? This is not unusual. We've, we've had a number of these and I, I, we haven't had any problem with any of them. I'm worried about this pressure treated wood and we've had it the last long time. I just think it's commendable for you to take on a project like this. This is, this is difficult. It's not an easy thing.
Yeah.
As an industrial arts man, I know that.
Geometry teacher.
Work here. Maybe you can get Mr. Donald Jernigan to help you with it over there.
Yeah, I got my.
Any questions?
Mr. Clark, will you say something?
I just, like I asked, Brock, how long do you think it will take for you to construct it?
I'm pretty sure I can get enough volunteers through July and then construct it in about a week at the most in August before school starts, so.
Congratulations, Gil, on your Eagle Scout.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Need to make the recommendation.
Uh, recommend that you approve construction of a gazebo by scout Scott, uh, Griffin Ford at Oakland High School to assist in Eagle Scout certification, no cost to the board.
You've heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. You can go. You're good to go.
Jeff?
Eight locations, summer feeding.
Eight locations, okay. You, you may need to head on to the commission, Jeff, during the next few minutes. Siegel Middle School canopy. Principal Tom Delbridge at Siegel Middle has requested permission to construct a metal canopy over the existing fit's concrete pad adjacent to the school's main boiler room. He currently stores lawn and sports equipment in this area and it is in need of the canopy to protect the equipment from the weather. Post canopy is approximately nineteen feet by twenty-six feet with a slope roof and an estimated to cost approximately thirty-four hundred dollars. School will fund the canopy at no cost to Rutherford County School Board. Recommend that you approve construction of a nineteen-feet-by-twenty-six-feet canopy at Siegel Middle at no cost to the board.
You've heard the recommendation. Have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed?
Revised policies?
Mr. Gill, instead of reading all those, they're already online. I mean, because you read them the other night. So I'd say that they're all policies that are, uh, pretty much required by the law, changes in the law and think so. I think we could probably just, you can make the recommendation on those policies. If somebody wants to go back and look at it, they can certainly see it.
Okay, I recommend that you approve the revision.
That's all right with the board. Okay, go ahead.
The revision of policies five point one-one-seven, five point two-zero-zero, six point four-zero-six, six point five-zero-zero, six point four-zero-five, two point seven-zero-two, six point four-zero-two and five point two-zero-one on the first reading as presented and recommended by the policy committee.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, by let, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General Discussion Board. Looks like it's going to storm outside. That's for some general information. Lightning struck my son-in-law's truck today and burned it up, sitting in the parking lot. I told him buy a lottery ticket tonight, probably a good time. Any more discussion? Be a jury.